Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our February 6th City Council meeting. At this time, I'd like to have Pastor Jim Garrison come forward from the United Methodist Church for the opening prayer.
And let us pray. God, we thank you for your rich blessings that you pour out upon us. We thank you for the richness of this land, and particularly this portion of the land that produces so much food for the world and produces income for those that work. We thank you for the rain that we've received recently and continue to have it damp outside. We give you thanks for that blessing. Lord, we give you thanks for the richness of the people that live here, for all the different kinds of people and their skills and things that they bring. We thank you for those that serve our community in leadership that are in the City Council. And we just thank you for this opportunity. We ask that you would now, as you've blessed us, that you would bless us today, that you would bless these leaders with wisdom and integrity and a spirit of cooperation and attentive ears, so that good ideas may come forth and decisions will be made that will be for the betterment of all that live in our community. And so, we give you thanks, and we give this time to you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I'd like to call to order the council meeting of February 6th, 2019. And Chief, would you lead us in the flag?
Yes.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Director Maloney, roll call.
Fariah.
Here.
Johnson Santos.
Here.
Jones.
Present.
Lewis.
Valalta.
Here. We do have a quorum. Consideration of approval of agenda, number four. Do I have a motion? Mr. Santos?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda stated.
Ms. Fariah?
Second.
Motion by Santos, second by Fariah to approve the agenda stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the Council Chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your name and the city of residence, and if you have a cellphone, please place them on vibrate or turn them off. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum and go on to item six, consideration of approval consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and were voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a City Council member. And tonight, we have, Director Maloney?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 214374 through 214667 in the amount of $1,160,392.92. Second quarter investment report for the fiscal year 2018-2019. City Council Resolution Number 6043, approving an amendment to Division 5 Personnel Benefits as it pertains to peace officers' standard in training incentive pay for police department unrepresented sworn and non-s sworn personnel and Division 5K workers' compensation reporting policy as it pertains to clarifying supervisor responsibilities of the city's Policy and Procedures Manual. City Council Resolution Number 6044, amending the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget by increasing appropriations and expenditures for landscape and lighting District Number 12 Mission Estates in the amount of $3,907.59 for storm drain maintenance. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a, anyone that, any City Council member would like to remove an item? And if not, do I have a motion? Mr. Fariah?
Oh, that's okay. I didn't chime in and shut it off.
Okay. All right. Mrs. Santos, well, let's try this again. Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
Okay. Do I have a second? Ms. Fariah?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Santos, second by Fariah to approve the consent agenda as stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay. Let's go on to public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues. You or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of an amendment of annexation number 11 to the City of Los Banos Community Facilities District, CFD 2002-01, Public Safety Services. Relative to the Shaughnessy Village located east of Mercy Springs Road on north of Scripps Drive, East Center Area Plan located east of Center Avenue, north of Pioneer and west of Crest Hill Subdivision, and North Point at Regency Park located east of Westminster Way, south of San Simone Way, west of San Luis Canal. Item one, City Council Resolution Number 6045, acting in its capacity as a legislative body, CFD 2002-01, of the City of Los Banos and Public Safety Services, calling an election regarding the annexation of certain property to CFD Number 2002-01 of the City of Los Banos Public Safety Services and to levy a special tax therein, in, to finance certain public safety services such as CFD Number 11. Okay. There is time that has been previously set and noted for the public hearing regarding the proposed annexation of territory to the Community Facilities District 2002-01, Public Safety Services, and related matters. Will Community and Economic Development Director Elms please present the staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is a PowerPoint presentation with this item.
All right. Let's try that. One, two, three. Does that work?
Right. Excellent. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So, just a bit of background on this particular item. CFDs, Community Facilities Districts, are Mellow, part of the Melrose Act, which authorizes local governments to create a Community Facilities District for the financing of public services and facilities. The City of Los Banos utilizes Community Facilities Districts for the purpose of financing public safety services. So, this would be for all of our first responders, police, fire, and our paramedics, rigs, ambulance. This particular item, back in December 5th, 2018, the City Council adopted a resolution of intent to annex territory to the Community Facilities District Number 11, which provides funding for Public Safety Services. The first territory to be annexed into the Community Facilities District, I do want to be clear for, just for the public's knowledge and for clarification, this is not annexation into the incorporated city limits. These projects are already incorporated in the city and already have an entitlement. They've been annexed to the city for many years. What this is, is annexing territory, those projects, those lands, into a specific district for public safety only, and it's for an assessment. It's a special tax district.
We're not bringing any new land and increasing the boundaries of Los Banos.
No. These projects are already in the incorporated city limits of the City of Los Banos. This is just the terminology that is used per the Melrose Act. So, the first project is Shaughnessy Village. It consists of 151 units, and it's 31.9 acres. So, in terms of, and I'm going to get to the ballot, which, there's an election that is going to be held after I give this presentation, and this project, each acre or a portion thereof has one vote. So, this project would have 32 votes. The next projects are, actually consist of the East Center Area Plan, and it consists of the Villas Project and the Hill Property. The Villas Project, which is the northern flag-shaped parcel outlined in yellow, consists of 231 single-family residential units on 58.8 acres, which would provide 59 votes. And then, the Hill Property, which is the rectangular piece on the southern portion, will consist of 138 single-family residential lots, and it has 24.4 acres, which is 25 votes. The next project is North Point at Regency Park. This project was also formerly known as the Villa Barano Area Plan. This project does not have a tentative map. However, the property owner has consented to annexing this territory into the CFD, the Community Facilities District, in anticipation of future lots. And so, the city, we encourage annexation to the Community Facilities District. It takes it, that issue, that concern, it puts it to rest, and then, we ensure that that project will be a part of the assessment district once it does get developed. North Point at Regency Park consists of 111 acres and will have approximately 596 single-family residential units. So, the fiscal impact, Community Facilities District Number 11 consists of approximately, it's over 1,100 residential units. The current Community Facilities District rate per this fiscal year is $361.94, and that's being charged for every unit within the district. So, based on that rate, these projects would generate approximately $403,925 for Public Safety Services annually, and that's its base rate, as the maximum annual special tax rate will be escalated to no more than 4% annually as determined by the Consumer Price Index, CPI. Each parcel will remain in the Community Facilities District in perpetuity or until the services financed by the Community Facilities District are no longer necessary, which, the City of Los Banos, we will most likely always be providing public safety, but should we, one day not, then, then this district would sunset, would no longer be valid. And then, the parcels within the Community Facilities District are only assessed when developed. So, raw land does not require, does not have an assessment. The assessment only occurs when a building permit is issued and a unit is developed. There's improvement on the land, which, this particular district, Community Facilities District, is for public safety, and if there are no units, technically, there would be no need for public safety assessment on that land. So, public hearing, public hearing notice was published in the Los Banos Enterprise, and any persons residing with the boundaries of the annexation Number 11 may appear and be heard on any matter relating to the establishment and extent of Community Facilities District Number 11. Currently, there are no habitat, there is no homes on those areas, those territories, which consist of CFD Number 11, and it does consist of one property owner for all three projects. So, with that, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt a resolution calling a special election for the qualified electors of annexation Number 11. This would be the landowner election, and then, each landowner, like I said, has one vote per acre or a portion thereof, which this one landowner would have 227 votes. And then, after the election is held and closed, that the City Council would then adopt a resolution declaring the results of the special election. And that concludes my presentation.
I will now formally open the public hearing regarding a proposed annexation of territory to Community Facilities District Number 2002-01, Public Safety Services, and the levy of a special tax therein. Will anyone who wish to speak, in favor of or opposition to these matters, please come Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing. Is there any discussion, or are there any questions from the members of the council? Mr. Fariah?
You're light. There. All right.
You good?
Not yet. No light yet.
All right. Let's try that.
Now, we're good.
All right.
Stacy, is the assessment per house, once it's developed, is, it's just per house, no difference based on square footage or bedroom numbers? It's just per house?
Yes, it is per unit. So, per home.
Okay. Very good. Thanks. Thank you, Mayor.
Mrs. Lewis? Is your light on? Oh, we're not? How come these aren't going on? Okay. Try that.
I didn't hit my light. That was from a long time ago.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right. We'll find out here. All right. So, is there any further discussion from the members of the council? Okay. Has the city clerk received written protest to any of the matters addressed in this public hearing from any registered voters or landowners of more than 50% of the acreage located within annexation Number 11 to the Community Facilities District Number 2002-01?
Have I received any protests? No. I have received no written protest.
Thank you.
Zero. Thank you.
If there are no further comments from the public or from the members of the council, I will now close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. The following will be adopted during the regular session. I will now entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 6045, calling for an election regarding the annexation of certain land to the Community Facilities District Number 2002-01 of the City of Los Banos. And this is an action, motion, or motion, action. So, do I have a motion? Okay. Mr. Fariah?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to adopt City Council Resolution Number 6045 regarding, calling the election as read by title.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Motion by Fariah, second by Lewis, to approve City Council Resolution Number 6045 as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. We will now take a short, five-minute recess for the city clerk to hold the election.
Mr. Mayor, the city clerk has the ballots that I just delivered to her, and so, we can end our recess if you'd like.
All right. Fine. Okay. Let's end the recess, and city clerk, you have a report for us?
I have received 227 yes votes and zero no votes.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 6046.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 6046, declaring the election as stated.
Okay. Santos?
Second.
Okay. So, I have a motion from Mrs. Lewis, a second from Mrs. Santos, for City Council Resolution Number 6046, acting in its capacity as a legislative body of CFD Number 2002-01 in the City of Los Banos, Public Safety Services, declaring the results of a special tax election and annexing certain territory, and annexing certain territory annexation Number 11. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Motion carried. Okay. Good. That laboring event is over. Okay. Let's go on to item eight, consideration of ordinance number 1168, amending Chapter 16, Title III of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to contract contracting for public works projects, Assembly Bill 2249.
Is my light? Mike, your light?
And we're going to go to...
Mike? Your light, it's not on.
Oh, it's not on? Let me read that again. Number eight, consideration of ordinance number 1168, amending Chapter 16, Title III of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to contracting for public works projects, Assembly Bill 2249. This is a second reading and adoption, and we're going to go to City Attorney Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. This won't be nearly as exciting as the last item, but I'll try. This is a second reading and adoption of this ordinance, which changes our current ordinance to comply with the current state law that was changed in January of 2019 under AB 2249. Essentially, what it does is, that bill changed the limits for the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act regarding bidding and bidding out contracts in public works projects. So, the changes that have been made just simply conform to the new state law. You can see those changes in your staff report, simply increasing the dollar limits to allow the city to continue on with this form of contract bidding and award in accordance with the new bill. So, unless there's any questions, what I'd like is a motion to waive the second reading, and then, a motion to approve the ordinance as submitted. I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Okay. Are there any questions of our attorney? Okay. No questions? So, if there are no questions, do I have a motion to waive the second reading? Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1168. Yes, 1168, excuse me.
Okay. Do I have a second? Ms. Fariah?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion by Johnson Santos, second by Fariah, for the waiving of ordinance, waiving of the second reading of ordinance number 1168. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go back to Mrs. Santos.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1168 as stated.
Okay. Ms. Fariah?
Second.
Motion by Johnson Santos to adopt ordinance number 1168, and second by Fariah. And roll call? Director Maloney?
Fariah?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta?
Yes. Okay. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's go on to item nine, consideration of approval of City Council Resolution Number 6047, establishing a policy regarding by-district representation to the Los Banos Planning Commission. And we're going to go to Director Elms.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So, as you may recall, back in December of 2018, the City Council provides staff direction regarding by-district representation for commissions and boards. It was determined that by-districting representation would be considered for the planning commission and only that commission, as they advise the City Council on decisions that are related to land use and development and are generally geographically based. So, with that, staff is asking that the City Council consider Resolution Number 6047, which establishes a policy to provide representation on the planning commission from each of the four districts, electoral districts, within the City of Los Banos. Staff is recommending that the planning commission continue to consist of seven members, which would be appointed by the mayor and recommended by the City Council, excuse me, recommended by the city, by the mayor... recommended by the city, by the mayor and approved by the City Council. Staff recommends that the four members be from a district and that three members would be at-large commissioners. At the appointment to the Planning Commission, that member's term, they would have to reside in that designated electoral district in addition to any other requirements of the Los Banes Municipal Code, which requires that they be a registered voter. And termination of residency in that district for by-district commissioners would result in immediate vacancy for that district unless a substitute residence within the district is established within 30 days of that termination of residency. So that's essentially what the policy consists of. The Planning Commission members currently in office would continue to remain in office until the expiration of their full term, and then this policy would only be applicable for future appointments to the Planning Commission. So with that, staff is asking that the City Council adopt Resolution number 6047, establishing a policy regarding by-district representation for the Los Banes Planning Commission. And that concludes my presentation.
And, and just to be, you know, really crystal clear, that we would still go through an interview process for any member of any district. And the, the member, if this is approved, the members at large would still apply and they would go through an interview process similar to what's happening now. And no one has, you know, power, the, what I'm saying is, is that it's not like one-person appointment, we want to interview and make sure the panel feels really good about, about the person that anyone puts forward, including the mayor.
So the candidates would still need to be qualified
Yeah.
to hold that commission and to be recommended for appointment.
Okay. Fantastic. Counsel, we good? Yes. Mrs. Lewis?
Stacy, it's my understanding with this ordinance that the district appointments are gonna be interviewed with the person who's in the district along with the mayor and, and then the rotation process happens with the mayor and other council members for the at-large appointees. Is that correct?
We didn't establish that within the policy, Mr. Vaughn. Let's defer that to the City Attorney.
We didn't go that far with the policy, but certainly the pleasure of the council to set that up as these vacancies become needed to be filled that the, if the, if the council wishes to have that district member be part of the interview panel, I assume that's what would happen.
Okay, so at this point, it could be an interview process with the district member and a recommendation to the council and...
I would envision it as the district member, the, the department head and the mayor.
Okay, that's, that's what I just said.
For that particular district.
Okay, and then basically it's the same thing. It's, it's gonna be interview process regardless of whether it's district or whether it's the three
Correct.
at-large members by the person in the district, and then the at-large members will be on a rotation basis of council.
So as it happens, we may only be recruiting for one district or two districts and no at-large, it just depends on how those terms are gonna fall.
Okay.
We didn't get that far ahead and trying to figure that all out, but yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I love that process, having the backup of the council, whether it be the person from that district or the rotating basis. And it works really well. So thank you, Mrs. Lewis. Okay, are there any other questions? Mr. Faria?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with Ms. Lewis, I like that idea that the council member in the same district of that planning commission, planning commissioner delegate would be interviewed by that council member of the same district.
So if you felt more comfortable, we could add that. Language to this policy, or you can adopt that policy in the next recruitment from, from the DAS, however you want to do it is fine with me.
I'd like to see it go into the policy now.
Okay, so we, we can add a paragraph to do that, you can go ahead and adopt tonight, and we'll simply state that the, the current, the current interview process will remain the same, except that the by-district appointment will include the representative from that district. That's a very easy fix.
And the at-large will include a rotation?
Yes. However you're doing it now.
Yeah. Okay. Rotation of a council member, yeah. Everybody good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so why don't we do this? Okay. I'm not gonna be able to repeat everything you guys said, so who wants to make the motion? And Mr. Faria, why don't you make the motion? Mrs. Lewis, why don't you second, if that's okay? And...
With that change.
With that change.
Okay. I'd move to establish, to adopt City Council Resolution number 6047, establishing a policy regarding by-district representation to the Los Banes Planning Commission. And the appointment of each planning commissioner by district would be, would be interviewed, each planning commissioner delegate would be interviewed by the council member in the district, in that district. Is that clear enough?
Along with the mayor and department?
Along with the mayor and department head, of course.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And, and the at-large?
Oh, and then the at-large will continue on the rotating basis as has been done in the past.
Of a council member, yeah. Okay? All right, Mrs. Lewis? Wait a minute, let's, let's get you on here. Try that.
Second the motion.
Okay. So we have a motion by Faria as stated with amendments and seconded by Mrs. Lewis to approve item nine with the changes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Thank you, Counsel. Okay, let's go on to item 10, community and economic development update. Mrs. Elms?
Again, thank you again, Mr. Mayor, and I do have a PowerPoint presentation for this item.
All right. Oh, boy, it magically did it by itself. All right.
I'm hoping, well, we'll keep moving and hopefully the other screen cooperates with us. So I'm just gonna dive right into this presentation, and the purpose of this update is just to highlight various projects that the Community and Economic Development Department are working on currently. So first is the general plan update 2040. As you may recall, this particular general plan update has a strong emphasis on economic development, so it has its own economic development strategy. So the state of California requires each city to have a general plan, and it has various elements within the general plan which we are mandated to have. We, the City of Los Banes, have elected to include economic development as an, as an element within our general plan. We're not forced to, but we have decided as a community that, that is a priority and we want to plan and create a vision for where we want our economic development to be for the future. So this particular update has two action plans specifically related to economic development. The first is a downtown strategic plan, and it is analyzing existing and ongoing efforts to strengthen our historic downtown. We're, we are utilizing Placeworks, they are our general plan consultant, and working with the Downtown Association to gather input to develop our general plan policies and actions. And the Downtown Association currently is working on a revitalization and beautification plan for downtown, and the city's desire is that we would dovetail right into those efforts and to a lot of the movement that's going on between the property owners and the merchants that the Downtown Association is working on. It's just the, the right timing to be able to, to have those same efforts coincide with each other, and we can use what the Downtown Association is doing as a building block. And then the Downtown Association and the property owners are contemplating a feasibility of a property-based improvement district, which is a P-Bid. Within the staff report, I do give a little bit of a narrative of, of what a P-Bid is, and I do want to just highlight that for any questions. So a P-Bid, it, the purpose of it is to provide a district that enhances services to the downtown for improvements such as, but not limited to, cleaning, maintenance, security, beautification, lighting, activity, marketing and branding. The P-Bid would need support from property owners in the proposed district, who would pay more than 50% of the assessment in order to create the district. And staff anticipates providing an update to the City Council, we're thinking probably closer to the March timeline on whether there is or there is not enough support from the property owners for the formation of a district. So the Downtown Association is meeting, they have hired an, an executive director, Sharon Silva, she's the consultant who did the presentation back in September. Sharon has a lot of experience in that she did the revitalization plan for Turlock and also helped them organize their P-Bid for their downtown. And their, their beautiful downtown is a model of which we would hope Los Banes one day, we won't be a Turlock, but hopefully one day we will have the economic benefits of, of a downtown like Turlock. Then next is the business park master plan. This is an action plan, an action item also within the general plan update and that we're currently working on. Currently, we're focusing on developing this plan for I-5 and Highway 152. If you may recall, there was previous discussions, probably started about three or four years ago, of an industrial business park at I-5 and 165. And based on analysis from staff and our consulting staff, we had determined that the superior location would be at I-5 and 152. It's essentially already in our sphere of influence within the general plan, it was already contemplated with the general plan 2030 as an employment park. So it just seemed to be the most feasible alternative and also the closest to our immediate incorporated city limits. So as a part of this effort, we've also been meeting with the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, regarding airport relocation, that's also a part of the business master plan. What would eventually happen with the airport, whether it would be relocated? And it will assess existing conditions and opportunities and constraints to develop a business park. So it's going to identify those uses that would best suit us and where there is a market for those uses here in Los Banes within a business park. We want to be reasonable and realistic and plan for those uses that we would be able to attract here to our community. You can stop me anytime you'd like, if you have any questions as I'm going through this. The next item is the housing element and our housing element compliance. Our housing element analyzes and assesses the current and future housing needs and provides actions to facilitate housing to meet those needs of all income levels. The housing element is one of those mandatory elements within our general plan. So we're required by the state of California to have this element specifically in our general plan. A housing element gets updated on a separate cycle than the general plan, so there, your housing element is typically extracted from the general plan and it's its own document. And that's just because the state has mandates on the planning period of housing elements, and those are based on a region. So Merced County, we are in the fifth cycle currently right now. And within our housing element, we are committed to rezone to accommodate a shortfall carryover of adequate zone sites from the previous housing element, and that period was the fourth cycle from 2009 to 2014. In that previous cycle, the city was committed to rezoning a certain amount of R1, low-density residential acreage to high-density R3. That did not occur, there was a shortfall of about five acres, which equates to what was in the previous general plan to 81 units. We needed to accommodate for an unaccommodated need for 81 units. So we are required in this fifth cycle planning period of the housing element, which is between 2014 to 2023, to complete this commitment. Because it was a shortfall carryover from the previous cycle, we were only given one year to complete this. However, the city, city staff, myself, I've been working with the Department of Housing and Community Development for an extension of this one-year requirement in order to ensure our compliance with our housing element. So we are required to rezone this shortfall or risk losing housing element compliance. And what that means is that if we are not in compliance with our housing element, we would not be eligible for state funding sources like CDBG or any other Caltrans, planning grants, any type of state funding that is out there, we would not be eligible, they're all tied to compliance with the housing element. In addition to the shortfall carryover, which is a five-acre project that was just approved by, it was recommended for approval from the Planning Commission last night with the special meeting, that'll be coming forward to the City Council on February 20th. But in addition to that, the City Council will also be seeing some updates related to housing within the municipal code, and this is, as the state continues, to focus on housing as their number one target. Especially the new governor, that is his action plan to focus on housing and the housing crisis in California. So with that, there are new laws that have been changed, and they are regarding accessory dwelling units, street vending and taxi cabs and micro, micro enterprise home kitchens as just being some of those laws that you'll be seeing coming down the pipe. And we anticipate that probably more housing state laws will be coming down the pipe that we will need to address within our current municipal code to be in conformance with the state law. Residential development, just a highlight of what's going on with residential development. During the calendar year of 2018, the City of Los Banes issued 262 single-family residential permits, and we finalized 310 single-family residential permits. This is the first time in our history that we've finalized more permits than we've issued. Though that final number is, was carryover from the calendar year of 2017. And this is a bit unusual, but what we see is that there is demand and that there is a low supply currently right now in single, new single-family residential homes. Some factors that are contributing to that are the, the vocational employment of those contractors, so whether it be painters, sheet rockers, landscapers, roofers. During the recession, those industries lost their employees, they had to lay off those employees, and those employees found other jobs, and they're no longer in the industry. And so construction work and construction workers in general, it's very slim in California. And mostly what we see is that our developers are experiencing that those folks in that industry want to work in the bigger communities with higher pay than the Central Valley. So Central Valley has a deficiency currently right now in the construction industry, and so that is creating a little bit of a slowdown in the issuance of permits, which is creating a demand in the Central Valley because there isn't enough homes for buyers. So there, there is a demand and the supply is low, and as long as the Bay Area continues, those prices continue to rise, and housing is still unaffordable for the workforce in the Bay Area, we will continue to see the demand here in our community and in the Central Valley.
Is there anything on, on maybe yours or the attorney's listserv of, of your colleagues in the, in the, the San Joaquin Valley? Because here is my humble opinion as to what's happening. Individuals or families are moving here. They're moving here, which creates a strain on our, our, our public services. Rooftops do not pay the city's way. So we need more services such as social services, we need more services, hospital services, we're sadly lacking... We're sadly lacking in that area. And as we are in other services to keep up with the growth of our town. Well, the Bay Area doesn't have to expand these services because they only have an eight-hour employee, of which we provide for them. And then they come back here 16 hours a day or whatever it takes to drive. Is there any legislation out there to, or someone anticipating any type of legislation that is basically going to equal this out to where we're getting the people back here, we're getting all the social issues, we're getting all the absentee parenting. We're not getting the good things of having these people move here. And contributing to our community is being in our community. And when people are not here all that time, we have to pick up the slack somehow and we don't have the funds to do it. So I don't know if there's anything out there, if anyone's ever going to research that. Because, you know, everybody, the airboard talks about having to reduce carbon emissions. And here we are, the city of Los Manos. I don't know how many tons of carbon emissions we're causing because people are living here and they're going to the Bay Area. And why we're not moving faster on transportation, of which we've already started, but transportation that's emission-free and how we're going to take care of our children to make sure that they have places to go when parents aren't here. And, you know, the quality of life for these individuals that are on the road four hours a day plus their job. So I guess what I'm getting at, why? If there's some kind of legislation or something that we can do, businesses don't want to locate in the Central Valley because they're already entrenched in the Bay Area and they have a built-in workforce. But it's not fair to our communities. We can't keep up with all the demands because of the strains it's putting on us. So I don't know if there's anything out there or anything that's going to come up or anything to be the great equalizer. But I would hope that you guys would watch out to see if there's anything that we can do and lessen the stress on individuals that have to move to Los Manos because they can't find a home in the Bay Area. And I just read a report the other day, $4,500 for rent. $4,500 a month average rent for people. And they could come here and buy two fantastic homes for that. So I don't want to get too much off. I probably already have. The attorney's not getting the cattle prod out yet, but I figure since this is agendized, it's part of this. So please look on listserv, please look and see if there's any legislation coming out that's going to be some of the great equalizer to help us out.
Sure, we'll definitely keep an eye out, especially with the housing element and the focus of that on the state. Right now, we're anticipating, especially the bigger metropolitan areas, that there be special legislation for their housing needs and then repercussions for not meeting their regional housing needs. Yeah, so we're anticipating.
At reasonable prices?
Yes, so there'll be violations. There will be more enforcement is what we anticipate coming down the pipe for those bigger metropolitan areas that are not providing their housing needs that they are required to have.
Okay.
But we will talk later. A part of this presentation is industrial recruitment because we do recognize that there needs to be a balance between jobs and residents. So between the jobs and the rooftops and what we're doing for industrial recruitment. That's going to be later on in this presentation.
Wait, hang on, Mrs. Lewis, let me get that for you. There you go.
Yeah, in regards to the mayor's concern, and I'll direct this to our city manager. Don't we have someone, a legislative person in Sacramento that could assist us in finding out what might be happening in regards to the mayor's concern?
We do. I think Stacy did make the comment that we would keep an eye out for that. And yes, we do, we will.
Because I, you know, I understand his concern, but I wouldn't want to, you know, since we're paying for someone to work with us to do this kind of stuff, I just want to make sure that that's directed to that person to seek out if there's going to be any legislative action or financial compensation coming down to smaller communities that have to take care of these problems.
Right, as the mayor was making those comments and Stacy did follow up with that comment, I was certainly thinking about that. So thank you.
And so for 2019, we are anticipating a steady year for issuance. We're not anticipating a spike or an increase, a huge increase in issuance. We're probably anticipating a very similar year to what we were in 2018. And that's just looking at the market and just the industry in general. This map, so within the staff report, there was a map. And it's this map that's depicting the residential projects that are in the pipeline. And I do want to highlight, I just want to dissect this map just a bit for you. So these projects that are highlighted in yellow are under construction currently right now. So these are active subdivisions. We have currently five subdivisions that are active. And they are, you know, on all sections of the community. But villages at Stone Creek 2A and 3 and villages at Stone Creek 4, which is Stonefield Homes and also Anderson Homes, are with the largest units of those projects, as you can see. And that's on the southwest quadrant of the city of Los Manos. I'm not going to name all of those subdivisions, but if you have a question, they are all outlined in what's this map that's included in the staff report. They're all labeled as well as the units that are under construction and that are also planned and then the year that they were approved. But if you have any questions or you'd like me to even go over them one by one, feel free, let me know, I can do that for you. The next are those projects that are in pink in that map are associated with planned projects. So these projects have not been issued a building permit yet. They're just, they've been planned. So they either, they have some sort of entitlement on them. So that means they have a tentative map or an area plan on them that approves them for future development. But we do not have any active building permits on these particular projects in pink. So these projects are in the pipeline. These projects are also phased. So we won't see them all built overnight or even within a year. This is a housing stock that'll probably last us six to eight years. And this particular project is Presidential East Annexation. And this is just for the purpose of highlighting this project that's been in the review. It's the only annexation that we currently have in for consideration. This project has been on the books since about 2013 and is being revised based on new developments. And the property owner that had control of the southern portion has now acquired the northern portion. And we anticipate the environmental document being completed soon and revised. And a fiscal impact analysis is also being done to determine the fiscal impact on the city of that annexation. So jumping to retail recruitment, and please again, feel free, slow me down if I'm going too fast. But retail recruitment, what we're doing with that, we're continuing to work with Buxton Company, which is our retail recruiter. We've identified specific retailers and restaurants with similar markets as our residents and we use their analytic data that they've analyzed based on the city of Los Manos and have created matches for us. We are now on year three with our contract with Buxton. We are entering into that, actually, year three is in February, so we've just kicked that off. And we are preparing for attending ICSC, which is the International Council of Shopping Centers. There's two main events that we attend for ICSC. The first is in Monterey. It's specifically targeted for Northern California and Central California retailers and property owners and brokers. And so staff will be attending that particular show, which is called the Idea Exchange. It's a two-day show, but it really gives us the opportunity to meet one-on-one with retailers and brokers. And then we're able to also meet with our various property owners and discuss their plans for development. And then we use, like I said, this opportunity to tell our story of Los Manos. Another show that we will be attending again for the third year will be ICSC Recon Retail Convention in Las Vegas. This is a national retail convention where every retailer you can think of is there. And this gives us the ability to have that one-on-one time with those retailers to tell them about Los Manos, who we are, to give them our market analytics and describe to them why they would be a perfect match for our community. We've been successful the last two years. We went 2017 and 2018. We've had success stories just from those two trips. One success story should be coming up in the next couple of weeks. A new retailer on the west end of town that we should be able to announce here fairly shortly as a product of the 2018 show specifically. We were able to meet with a retailer and a property owner, bring them together, show the analytics of why they would be a great match for Los Manos and make that connection. But economic development is a slow process. And our industrial recruiter, Audrey Taylor from Chabon, which I'll announce here shortly, can attest to economic development is a long process. It's a relationship that is built over time and it doesn't happen overnight. And retail recruitment specifically, it has its variables. It's almost very scientific how it works. And what a retailer is looking for, as long as you meet what they're looking for, they will, for the most part, give you consideration. But it still takes a long time of drafting leases and negotiating and the back and forth that happens between the property owner and the retailer. That's essentially what takes the longest time. I mean, Alex and I, it was May last year. We've been going back and forth with the property owner, just checking in to see how close they are and finalizing this particular lease that we should be able to announce in the next couple of weeks. But it's almost been an entire year because we met with them back in May in Las Vegas. So I just want to reiterate, it takes a while, but just be patient with us. We're working on it behind the scenes. So that which leads us to industrial recruitment. So we're continuing to work with Chabon Concepts on industrial recruitment strategy. We've identified what industries, we are identifying what industries the city should be targeting. And we have a strategic plan, a tactical plan that we've developed. And now I will turn it over to Audrey Taylor from Chabon Concepts with her presentation on what our strategy is this year.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Audrey Taylor from Chabon Concepts, Chico, California, up there. So I'm so happy to be here. And I do want to make a comment regarding your question on the housing and what's coming down legislatively. I had a chance to attend through the internet a presentation by the new director of GO Bis, the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development. He did a presentation yesterday, 24 hours into the job of what they're doing. Most of it was about the governor's priorities and around the budget itself. But it was very interesting that most of the discussion was around housing and the housing crisis. It's in California and how the communities are affected. They did some question and answers and of course, there wasn't a lot of answers to what was going on. But it certainly sounds like rural is not going to be ignored in here. There will be a lot about the housing development, bringing it closer to economic development and also about sustainability. So I think there's going to be things coming down the pipe through probably Strategic Growth Council, probably through California Forward and other initiatives that are really taking a look at, you know, the effect of the housing crisis that's having on all communities. So I think that's good. We haven't heard that from GO Bis before. It's really been focused more on the job side of it. So now all of a sudden, it's opening up and taking a broader look at the housing crisis and how it affects jobs and how do we find solutions for all of it? So I thought that was good and it was timely for that. So I'm glad to be here tonight to kind of talk about your business plan for industrial recruitment. Make sure I know which way I'm going here. If I press all of them, they'll all work. Do that. So the agenda tonight is to really kind of give you an update of where we're going, what's happening. And we did have a tactical plan, so we want to do a little review on the tactical plan, some keys to recruitment for industrial and really go through three goals that we see that need to help you be more competitive in the marketplace and then sort of a schedule. So if you remember in the tactical plan, there was several things that we discussed in the tactical plan about industrial recruitment. And as Stacy said, you know, it's long-term and it's more long-term for industrial than it is for retail. Retail does, as Stacy pointed out, sort of works by numbers and, you know, what's the market demand? Whereas in industrial recruitment is a lot of, you know, am I a fit? Do I have my employees? A lot of decision factors go into that. We also know that the landscape for job creation, the job-creating businesses, particularly in manufacturing, is very fierce. You know, particularly throughout the Central Valley. Most communities are trying to, you know, recruit those businesses because they want that economic impact, because that's the largest economic impact you can have in your community. So that's really important. An active location and probably for retail as well as industrial can be anywhere from 18 to 36 months. It takes a long time for those unless they're actively looking, you know, creating that, gee, I need to move and there's an economic benefit to doing that and there's a value proposition for me. Takes a long time. We discussed last time that that whole, you know, complex decision process that a manufacturer looks at. There's multiple factors they look at, dependent on the industry itself and that business. And this is kind of hard to see, but they're looking at taxation, they're looking at risk. They want to find the optical optimal location for transportation. So it's not an easy decision for the company to make through that process. And for some companies, they may only look for an expansion or relocation once in their lifetime. So they're not experts at this at all. So what we need to do is help them see that process. So the thing that we're going to talk about tonight is really about what's those marketing tactics? And there's really three that we want to look at. And the first one really has to do with the value proposition of the city. You know, how do we increase our value proposition to a business to help them make that decision? You know, and remove any obstacles that could be in their way. We want to set the stage for them to visualize what the possibilities are. The second thing is really to get on their radar screen. And I'm going to talk more about each one of these and then to build relationships. As Stacy referred to that with the retail, it's all the same. You know, building that relationship with certain people and certain people that are in the industry so that you get on their radar screen. So the goal to create a stronger value proposition, we have several challenges there. So we know that probably 70% of the businesses relocate probably within 100 to 150 miles. Though that's going to be taken in our Bay Area. Well, between here and the Bay Area, you have a lot of competitors. So there is competition going on, some that have more things than the city has, you know, some that have less. We also know that about 70% of those businesses that may look, you know, because their lease is ending, they need to expand for any number of reasons. You know, there could be turnover in that community itself, so they're being pushed. You know, there could be turnover in that community itself, so they're being pushed out of that area. They're going to probably look for an existing building. And this is where the real challenge that we have is that we have limited building space and there's a lot of inventory out there. So talking with brokers and interviewing the brokers that I've interviewed. So there's a lot of inventory up in the San Joaquin area, Stanislaus right now. Those two areas are starting to see that overflow that's coming out and lots of space is being built in those areas. So that's what we're competing with. So and that will kind of drive the rest of our presentation here. We also need to make sure that we have sufficient information to answer all of those complex questions and factors that the business looks at. So those complex, going back to those, how do we answer these? And this is again about how do we set the stage for them to see that they should be here? You know, what are the possibilities there? So our biggest challenge is we don't have buildings. We don't have ready-to-go buildings. You know, we have land, we have some nice industrial space. There's great opportunities. So how do we get that user or that business or even a broker to say, hey, they should be here? You know, the timeline for building a building expands probably their decision process. So we don't want them to do that. Locally, we don't have them because probably we don't have contractors, developers, landowners who want to build a spec building because they don't know how long it's going to stay on the market. So the alternative to that is could we look at having a virtual building program? So that you have kind of like model homes, but this is for industrial? I'll show you some examples here. So virtual building programs. This is done back east more than it is done on the west coast. Is that they have basically portfolios of buildings that are basically industrial. They're easy to put up, but you're giving the customer a package and saying, here's your alternatives. In this case, the one that we're looking at, you know, I think the building sizes are 30,000, 50,000, and 100,000. We would probably look at, you know, anywhere from 5,000, 10,000, 25,000 and up, depending on the land size that we have. But a package like this, again, starts to set the stage. If you look at this, you can see, okay, this is what my footprint would look like. And this is, you know, we would consider that these would be pre-approved. This is what it's going to cost and this is my timeline. Now we've answered all of their questions. So earlier this year, we were trying to deal with a company that was looking to expand. They were looking here in Los Banos because they had a lot of their employees were here, you know, which is a good thing. Turned out the company got bought out by another company, so the decision process went away, which is going to happen. But where we started getting complex with the company itself, because the company was looking, they're saying, gee, we've got employees down here, might be a good location for us. Now they've got to talk to a contractor. Okay, well, what is that going to cost me? I've never dealt with a contractor before. So how do we take that decision process off for them and make it much simpler? So something like this kind of lays it all out. It gives them the timeline, gives them the cost factors, with the understanding that they're going to have TIs go into it. So that's going to be, you know, a decision that they make with a contractor. But we're bringing them the package, which is what we're trying to do. In supporting that effort, again, we go back to those decision factors that they have to make that may not have to do with the building. So we need to kind of up our game in that, particularly on our website, on data that is really more specific to help them make that decision. We have the general data and we want them to analyze it. So we need to turn that process around and analyze it for them and tell them why it's a value that they be here. And so there is a list of information that we would want to improve upon so that we're changing into, again, what we call value proposition to help them make that decision further. So our second goal here is to get on their map. And to do that, we have a number of challenges. Again, you know, people are unaware of the city, you know, unless they've had employees, like this one company did that lived here. Still, the Central Valley is perceived too far from the market, particularly in the Bay Area. Even though they have employees driving back and forth and it's a perception that they have. They're also kind of unsure if that's a place to do business and live. So they want to be in a comfortable place. They know what they have right now, but moving to someplace else, what's that change? What's that dynamic? The other is to build awareness. This is kind of the theory that we use in economic development to get on their radar screen and build a brand. We call it touchpoints. How many times can we touch that business and be in front of them to build a brand awareness? And so to just build the awareness, you have to be in front of them 21 times. And if you think of a GEICO ad, okay, I mean, you're getting hit 100 times, you know. But when you think of insurance, you might think of them. You know, it probably comes to mind. You may not like their ad, so you might decide on somebody else. But insurance peoples are doing that all the time. And the theory is how do you get in front of this customer so you can be top of mind? So just to build awareness, it's like 21 times. To be considered takes another 11 times to be in front of them. And then with that, only one out of 35 that are looking at you will even consider this process. So you kind of have to keep thinking about, okay, what is our campaign to keep us in front of them? So we know on your target audiences, we've been looking at, you know, food processing and really artisan-type foods. Those are kind of the perfect match for this area, you know, obviously particularly from a manufacturing standpoint. Our other target market is real estate brokers. How can we get real estate brokers be spreading our word? You know, because they are usually working directly with the companies because they'll know a broker and they go to them. And then there's also the contractors. So we do have a list of 160 businesses that we want to target, you know, that are in this category. And that's 160 businesses and then we have a list of targets over that too. So we want to be very specific in targeting these types of businesses. And that's what Stacy does when she was doing the retail targeting too. So we would recommend that you launch a campaign that is really targeting these specific businesses, the real estate group and contractor group. In launching a campaign, it means you're going to put this campaign on to really work towards those 21 touchpoints through that process. So you want to be hitting them all the time until they give us a call. The one thing that you did such a great job with the ACE Tour, with your delegates from the Americas and those 50, they were so pleased with Los Banos. And they went away thinking this was the greatest community they ever came to. And their takeaway from this community was really about, you know, the value, you valued your community. You were welcoming, you were open, you know, that this community really had roots, you know, and it showed through everything you did and very powerfully too. And that you were business-oriented. So we would like to suggest that you have a theme for your campaign. All campaigns have a theme and that yours be about your core value. And we believe that that core value is your deep community roots and the global reach. You know, you really showed yourself in that event that you have that global reach. And that's powerful right there. And also that you have these deep roots with the businesses that you have here and yourselves. So kind of taking, going back to, I think, what creative piece came from this design here was a building that you took, kind of cleaned up and you found an old crate that was this. So this kind of represents, you know, where you come from and where your roots are from. So if you think about a campaign, you have a theme that you work from. And if we want to achieve those 21 touchpoints, we have to do several different things. Videos are very, very powerful. So when you do any kind of marketing with videos that are on your website, 54% increase your brand awareness. So they're not just looking at one little thing, they're watching a video for longer and it starts to increase that brand awareness. Also, anybody that's doing text on a website with video, you have a higher conversion rate. So by 67%, there'll be more qualified leads through that process, which is a great thing. So thinking about a campaign, so videos that can be done, you know, that really work with what your messaging is going to be about talking about, you know, your deep roots, your community, who you are, why it's valuable to be here. You could kick it off with the ACE Tour. There is some video footage right now on the ACE Tour, which is very powerful to kind of kick off a campaign. And then you could do videos about the different businesses that you have here and why they do business here. They could talk about the labor force. So now they're doing the talking for you. They're telling the story. There could be a video of a site selector. You had Don Sheldon here last week. Just have a site selector say, hey, here is the advantages. You're having a third party tell, here's the advantages of being located here for a manufacturer. There could be drone footage flying over that makes a video. They don't have to be long, they just have to be short and they have to supplement so that people can really see and feel. We could do a video of a building so that they can visualize themselves in a building. The other, Stacy, if you could get that. The other in kind of doing a campaign, you kind of think of, okay, what are the things that we're going to do to get the attention of the businesses? So we would recommend that the first piece would be a letter out to 10 or 12 of the businesses that we have 160 lists, but 10 or 12. But that letter would be on this paper, seed paper, where we would introduce that they plant their seeds in Los Banos. And they can plant that paper and it will grow. There are seeds in that paper for them to grow. And again, the idea is they get something different from a community. You know, you're going to get their attention with that. So and this would be probably a letter from the mayor, you know, out to the people, telling them about the deep roots here and that they can plant their seeds. Mayor, you want to comment on that? No, no, you're supposed to plant it and then it'll grow. So following that, when you're recruiting businesses, again, you're trying to get their attention. So you want to give them something that's kind of unique. Well, that's kind of unique, you know, to do that. But then following it up, again, we got our 21 points. So in between, in a campaign, you're doing different things that get their attention. So your second thing would be, okay, let's send them a little box with the tools to plant, you know, your seeds in. And again, this would be plant your business in Los Banos. And then maybe a third mailer would be actually sending them some crops or something for them to plant. This opens the door for us to go meet with them and that's what we're trying to do. Trying to get through the gatekeeper to do that. And these are very unique to help do that. In addition, another way to get touchpoints was to do a bulletin, you know, not a newsletter, but just a bulletin. These are things that are happening. Keeping it short, but often and really focusing on three things. And those would be like the first video, you know, the delegates. I mean, I think that's so important. I mean, why would 50, you know, America's delegates come to Los Banos? You know, that's got to be a question, you know, that people, and people would be interested in it. Okay, well, why did they? And visit that? So we can do a little story around that, do a story around, you have some great businesses. Do stories around the businesses. Do stories around, you know, it's something that's historic or about the downtown. You have a great opportunity with the downtown with all that you're doing and it's in the opportunity zone. So there's many, many stories that we could write about that, that you get out to people and they keep going, wow, what are they doing down there? You know, we better be checking that out. A call to action is really, we have to have the call to action because through each one of these pieces, we're asking them to do a call to action, which would be a landing page on the website. But it would be a specific landing page that is branded with your, you know, your theme through that process where they are then can go out and they could contact Stacy directly, can contact the city manager, or they could get more information. They could download a packet of, gee, here's our virtual buildings, you know, pick one and when we're ready to build. And keeping the program consistent, you know, we just have PowerPoints. So when you're doing presentation to brokers or businesses and stuff, you have a consistent theme so that they see that all the time. The third goal is to build the relationships, you know, and that's really kind of what we call the brokers visits. Getting into brokers right now is really hard. So you either have to know them, but you try to make that visit, you try to leave some information for them. They are extremely busy now, so they're looking for any communities that make it easy for them to sell it because they're busy enough and there's enough inventory out there that they're going to take the path that's the least hard to sell. So we have to make it easy for them. But brokers are a great source to get leads and that they could pass on to their clients that, hey, have you ever thought about this? Fam tours are often done, we think of really visitor and convention bureaus do fam tours all the time for media. In this case, a fam tour would be to invite the brokers here. So very similar to what you did with the ACE delegation is that you would have them come here and see the area and meet with some of the businesses so they get their feet on the ground and see that. And then the business outreach would be actually after we send the three direct mailers, we would go meet with those businesses and do the real sales. Here's just a kind of a concept for a different type of leave behind. You always leave a packet behind. And I've heard so often from brokers and site selectors and businesses too, is that there's this big packet and they call it the exploding envelope. And there's so much information in there that the people usually just toss it out because it's too much information. So what is the thing that's the easiest for them to look at visually? They don't have to go through a lot of things. So this is a map where you would have all your assets on it, your key businesses, your distances, all those things that are really important to them, but it folds down to almost a business card. So it's easy to keep. They can keep it where they keep their business cards and they will remember it. It will be like, oh, I remember that. Now where did I put that? Through that process. So we're looking at this as four quarters. You know, think of it as four quarters of doing a campaign. And so during your first quarter, you're doing your design and your creative work. In the second quarter, you're actually launching. So you're getting a video out, you're getting a mailer out, you're, you know, doing bulletins out. And then in your third quarter, you're keeping up those monthly touchpoints and stuff. In the fourth quarter, again, we measure everything. Everything is measured whether on the website or other. And then you kind of look at it again and then relaunch it. A more detailed schedule is here to talk about how that would be implemented in each one of the four quarters. So again, it's about making those 21 touchpoints all the time to do that. You know, through videos, mailers, bulletins, whoops, social media, the visits, fam tours, and then converting those, finding the prospects, converting those that they'll make a decision through that process. So, thank you. Any questions you might have through that process?
Well, our Merced County Association of Governments, we met with them recently. And what they're going to do is they're going to conduct a study of all the commuters for us. And actually in all of Merced County. Because part of it came up, part of this that came up was the fact that, that the, as I mentioned earlier, the individuals, the number of people that are commuting and the pollution that's occurring because they have to go in individual cars as opposed to the non-polluting forms of transportation. So now we're looking at having an event of Los Banos to see how the commuter connection could possibly work and also vanpool sharing and also the busing that would stop in Los Banos. So Stacy, we still have that in motion, correct? We're working on that? Yeah. And so, and then there's going to be a survey done to see what the impact is actually in Los Banos and also in in Los Banos and also in Merced with commuting. Los Banos has a greater impact than, than the other side. So we want to find out all this information, and then that's just, you know, more of a tool for us to use with these individuals when we meet with them.
Absolutely. Great.
Any other questions from council? Mrs. Lewis, do you have a comment?
Well, I, I think she's, this is probably more of a broader overview of what needs to be done, and the questions that I have are probably more specific into detail. I guess one of the things you mentioned is, is landowners possibly wanting to participate but not wanting to have capital on their property sitting there, not being utilized. Have, have we looked at, I mean, has anybody reached out to us to even consider doing this in Los Banos? Any landowners to put capital up?
Well, we, I, we have not approached the landowners about a program like this, okay? And that's, I think, what we're suggesting is that we do reach out to them. And what landowners typically, you know, our experience is, is that, you know, they're not ready to put up a spec building because then they're putting capital into building a building, not knowing if they're going to rent it. So man, what we're trying to do is impress upon a business owner that they can get in here, get in a building within a certain timeframe. So if we take that building as close as we can with the property owner's approval on X number of parcels that they have, and because you have two industrial parks that we could do this, one that has probably smaller types of footprints, another one that has larger, that just improves our chances. They really are not out so much, they're not doing a capital outlay at that time. And it really depends on the property owner, whether they want to own the building and, and want to lease it, which is up to them, we can't drive, or whether they want to sell it. So if we have a property owner who, let's say, wants to participate in the program and is willing to say, okay, I will have three of my parcels, I'd like to, let's figure out how to put, you know, building footprints on it and what, what would those look like? And kind of do the same type of layout that we have here. And if they wanted to go ahead and sell that, so it's kind of a package that they're selling, then we could also talk to banks about how, how to finance that, you know, for the business that might come in. And if on the alternative of that, if they wanted to lease it, at least we would know what the lease terms were so that the business could make a decision because the lease term here is going to be less than probably where they are. But they don't know that now because they don't know what the building's going to cost.
So as a lease, at, at the least, a pairing with the landowner and the business?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And the challenge is, it's not, you have to have that contractor in there too.
So in, you mentioned some marketing tactics and you indicated removing obstacles out of the way. Could you give some examples of what that might be?
I think that's where we make sure that they have all the information to make a decision.
Okay.
So that they can think about it, okay, we've looked at the financing, we've got a handle on the buildings and how long it'll take to get the buildings in, we understand the workforce. And since we're targeting certain types of industries, we could look at the workforce and really say, here's the workforce that we have in these occupations. So most often, what they're looking at is, okay, here's the workforce, but I'm not sure if my occupations are there. And then really pull in more telling the story versus them analyzing it. Okay, what kind of programs are we doing for those types of, of occupations? And what's the average wage of those? So, and we could even take it to, and which I would suggest, is that we would have comparisons for these types of companies operating, let's say, in the Bay Area, cost you this much for operations. Here, it would cost this much. So that, that cost differential is going to make it a change for them. And of course, if they're really thinking about their employees, it's a cost differential for their employees, so they'll have more productive employees. Yeah. Through that process.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mrs. Santos?
I have to say that I really like the campaign tactical plan, especially the leave behind maps, which would just have them think of us from time to time when thinking about building out. But I wanted to, and I think you were trying to touch on this a little bit, about the workforce and perhaps like even graduating seniors knowing that they would go into the workforce. I imagine that would be something that industrial companies might be looking at, is that something?
Well, workforce is number one. Yeah. So, and it changes, it used to change, you know, transportation used to be number one because how far were we from the market? You know, the good thing about this location is you're between two markets. So that, that's always a great thing. So that's probably easy than, what we call a market access is easy to explain. Hard to explain is the workforce. And that's why we want to dig down to the occupations. And then you would also want to dig down to, are the schools having any career pathways to these types of jobs? So, you know, and for some companies, you know, they're, they're hiring the secondary household earner, you know? So we want to document that, and that really goes around whatever that industry that we're targeting, you know, is about and get as much information. And you have a very, very good work net here, workforce organization. So we can also kind of show them the types of packages that they could get for training, you know, and the recruitment that they do. I'm very impressed with your work net, and I know Stacy has a very good working relationship with them to put packages together for the businesses. But you have to tell them upfront, what we don't want the business doing is trying to analyze the data themselves because if they do, they're too busy and they just set it aside. So again, we're trying to set that stage for them by doing it for them to make that value proposition, what we call.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah.
I can tell you, our columns, our, our, our city, our community college, recently they, they instituted a welding program. And, and these students, once they graduate, are going to be making quite a lot of money. And the class is full. So I can tell you that Merced College is really compliant, and what they will do is they will analyze the data along with us, and if a class is needed, I'm sure that they will, will go after the funds in order to institute that class, in order to provide the workforce for the people that will come here. So I know we have a team that will, will work together.
Right. And we just want to turn that around, is that these are the things we're already doing?
Yeah.
That meet you. And then if you have something that we're not meeting already?
Let us know.
We've got a team that does this. This is how, how they, and then we show them examples, case studies.
And that's already in place.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Faria?
It was already covered, that's, okay, thanks, Mayor.
All right. Any other questions from council?
Not on this, but I have some other questions.
Go ahead.
Presentation.
Okay.
And this is not particularly on your part, but some earlier things that Stacy, so, you know, I, I guess, Mr. Mayor, do you want to, can I refer to Stacy and her total presentation?
Have her stay here and then refer to both of them.
Okay.
Okay. I'll be glad to.
I'd like to go back to the, the Business Park Plan where Stacy mentioned about the relocation of the airport. Now, I know that land is really important to this community, and in my opinion, more than what it's being occupied for right now. So perhaps this question can be directed to Mr. Faison. What are we doing as a city to maybe not, if we can't afford to move the airport, what are the possibilities of us closing the airport?
Do you want me to answer that? So we have met with the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, just to see the feasibility of closure or relocation. And essentially what we were told straight off, straight out of the get-go was closure was not a consideration. And that is because the FAA is only concerned about the benefits to aviation, and we would have to determine that that closure is a benefit to aviation. We described the economic development, value of closure of the airport and being able to repurpose that land for something of better value for our community, the 41,000 citizens that we serve versus the hobbyists that utilize our current airport. And we were told from, directly from the FAA, that that is not of, essentially their priority, their priority is a benefit to aviation, and, and that would be the city's task is to determine why closure would be a benefit. So based on those discussions, essentially, as we see it, relocation is our only option because it's, it's hard to, to be able to, to describe why there is a benefit to aviation. There is no benefit with the closure. So relocation, we would have to be able to show that that benefit of relocation is better for the community, it's better for aviation because it's a better facility, it would have new technology, and it would meet safety standards that the FAA requires today. We also wanted the FAA to recognize that if we were to plan today a location for an airport, we would never put it where it's located today. They recognize that as well. They've, they understand that that is not the appropriate location today for an airport. But as they see it, again, it comes back to, it's on the city to prove what the benefit to aviation is for closure or relocation. It's also a longer period of time for closure, and that's, and Alex, if you want to step in?
Well, before he does that, there have been other cities within the Bay Area where they've closed down smaller airports or combined airports into another location that's already existing. Have they given us that alternative?
No, as we're generally, we're not in a location to combine with a surrounding community where there would be a benefit, again, back to aviation. We'd still have to prove that there's a benefit, and we'd still have to put our resources in combining and showing that there is a benefit to aviation. If there's any other, am I missing something?
Okay, so you said combining our resources to, in some other community, is that a possibility?
I think it would be possibly a, a point of a discussion that we could have with the FAA. I just don't think that economically that would be probably the most feasible for us. Within the staff report, it does describe just essentially where we are at today with the, with the relocation. The FAA does have a policy that essentially states that the proceeds of the sale of the airport would have to go back into the enterprise fund. So essentially, we're trying to get to the bottom of that discussion first and foremost. Is it to the, is it in the best interest of the city to, whether it's closure or relocation, to sell the, our existing property? Because if it has to go back into the enterprise fund and we can't use those proceeds to redevelop that land or to a better and higher use, then what's the advantage to the city essentially? It puts us back there. So we are working to get clarification. Essentially, we're going to be hiring, well, working with special legal counsel to provide a formal response to the FAA on that determination.
Mayor, Mayor, if I might jump in?
Go ahead.
Councilmember Lewis. So we've, we've been meeting and corresponding with FAA staff at the regional level, and we're, we're, we're getting, I think, the, the formulaic response. So we're in the process of generating correspondence with the assistance of outside special legal counsel to really kick it up, kick it up the chain to FAA in Washington DC. So our thought was to, when we're, when we're back east attending One Voice with MCAG, would be to schedule a meeting with the FAA staff to make our case. We would, before that, develop correspondence to send to the FAA. And as I sit here and think through the process, I'd, I'd, I would suggest that we bring that letter to the council for your buy-off on the letter before we send that to the FAA. So we would come back to you with that letter, send it to the FAA, and then follow up with the meeting in Washington DC with FAA staff, headquarters staff, to get some of our answers, get all of our questions answered. So that, that's kind of the process we're looking at.
And, and I appreciate that, but, and I'm looking at the overall picture of this to the benefit of our city where we have, we have this density that's closing in around this airport and the value of this land, what it could bring to the city is, whether it's a hospital, whether it's industry, whatever the case may be. You know, we're just sitting on a gold mine and, and I, you know, I'd like to move this along as quickly as possible and not see this stall where we're not maximizing, enhancing our city and bringing it to its highest potential. So I, I could appreciate that, and, and I could appreciate, you know, scheduling a visitation with One Voice with the FAA to bring this to the, to the higher level so that we're not, you know, we can just bypass, some of the people are going to give us the pat answers to say no.
Right. I, I share your concerns about the process and the time. Mark, just correct me, but Santa Clara County, the airport there, that's been going on, what, 25, 30 years?
Reed Hillview in San Martina has, sorry, as councilperson Lewis knows, has been going since I was a young man, at least 10 years, no, probably a long time. I can remember when I was in San Jose State, having issues with it. I remember talking about that when East Ridge first built, that was a big concern.
Oh, that was when I was a kid too, actually, so.
Really?
Yeah.
I can say that, I'm older than you. But I think also, one thing that is going to be frustrating in this process, and I realize this, even with the move, of movement of that airport, I still think you're looking at a 10-year process. I hate to say that.
And I understand that, but I want to see the process start. I, I don't want to see us continue to.
Well, and that's why we're jumping all the way up to Washington DC because we have gotten semi-answers, but never, here's the question answered exactly, and we need that because the big issue is who's that land valuing to? That's a very big issue because if we do move the airport, we have to move it, we have to build one that's exactly what it is now on our dime, and then they'll come in and help anything above that, if we can get, if we get the permission to move it. So where do we get those funds? They're saying from the land. And even the residual of that land has more value supposed to go in the airport enterprise fund, which seems very odd since it wasn't bought with airport enterprise money, but that's what we need to really wrestle with, with Washington DC.
Well, you know, again, many years ago, when this city was more in the downtown area and not where our airport is located, I can understand that, it was pretty much rural. And the same with Reed Hillview in San Jose. It was all farming around that area at one time, and then East Ridge built up and many crashes, you know, going across the top of that, uh, uh, East Ridge, the, the shopping center, as well as a crash on the, a local elementary school in the summertime. Thankfully, there were no children in the school at the time that crash happened. So it's not just a safety issue, it's the value to our community as a whole, and that's, that's where I'm coming from, and, and I want to see us utilize that property for the whole of the community and, you know, not for small recreational use at this point. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Another question?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Tonight, our presentation will be by our Assistant Public Works Director, Greg Pimentel. Do we have video or just? Site visit. Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we wanted to give you a progress report of the future of the police operations and the sheltering of our animals here in the city. That presentation should come up anytime.
Okay.
Thank you. As you're probably all aware, at the start of last year, the city finalized some negotiations for the purchase of land that's adjacent to the new Philosco Justice Center over on G Street. And shortly after that, Alex organized the staff to develop the strategy for building a new police operations center. By October, we had selected a engineering consultant firm to prepare an assessment of the needs for new facilities and the future of the existing facilities and the land that we currently own. In December of last year, the CEQA determination was completed and the zoning change for the proposed new police station site were approved. Most recently, the needs assessment consultants and staff invited the community to participate in a discussion about the future of our police department facilities, including the animal shelter. This year, we're poised to be a noteworthy year in the goal of building a new public safety facility. The property on G Street should be cleaned up by the seller, this is a condition as, for the purchase. We have a conceptual plan for the development of the G Street site and some cost estimates. There's four sites or four concepts that the consultant needs to prepare. We've, I'm going to show you a couple of them here tonight. The funding mechanism for the design, the construction and furnishing of a new police station should be in the works by the time we get done with our needs assessment. In the fall, we should be in a position, I hope, to initiate the architectural design for a new police station. In the immediate, staff's been working extensively with the consulting firm of Indigo, Hammond, and Plail Architects on the assessment of our police department needs. Our first task was to establish some goals for enhancing the operation of police services, and I believe that the community can embrace the goals that have been identified so far. We should build a facility which can expand services to the community for years to come. We should provide a safe, secure environment for staff to function in, in one location, especially when it comes to evidence and things like that and officers walking up and down between facilities. We should provide a safe and secure environment. A theme throughout the country and definitely in Los Manos is a facility that encourages the community to really engage the police department. We should have a facility that functions efficiently and serves the community under all conditions. And so staff met with Indigo team on October 22nd, we exchanged some information, ideas were shared, existing buildings and land were inspected and the future site was visited. The new police facility site is just west of the courthouse and directly across the street from the F Street Public Works Maintenance Yard. Our staff and the Indigo team toured police stations in Clovis, Turlock, Vacaville, and Woodland during the first part of November. Visiting the newer police stations, a couple of which were designed by our consultant, Indigo, enabled us to meet with police staff in those communities, observe some of their likes and dislikes, some of the do's and don'ts to achieve a functioning facility. On December 3rd, staff met with the Indigo team for a second work-study session. Staff was presented some options for the use on, of space on G Street. We discussed a few site layouts which incorporated many of our goals. One of those concepts places a police station directly across from the San Juan, from San Juan Avenue on G Street. This concept shows a second access from a secure parking area onto the future 10th Street, which we have yet to develop or build. Another concept depicts the front of the police station facing the northwest corner of 10th and G, and that's also showing that 10th Street is, is built at this time, at that time. With the needs assessment, the city asked Indigo to evaluate our animal shelter and make suggestions for improving the services and what an ideal shelter could look like. So our, the Indigo staff visited our shelter. They compiled data from our records and developed an analysis, working with the University of California at Davis. And we're told that Davis has the premier school for veterinary science in the country, so we have some qualified people helping us with this part of the process. Indigo and Dr. Danae Wagner, she's the professor who came down, she's a professor of veterinary medicine at the university, provided the city with some valuable information about servicing of animals at our shelter. In this slide, you see a, a shelter that is complete with a vet clinic, animal bonding areas, community activity room, isolation rooms, and a separation of dogs and cats. We asked Indigo to show us what a shelter would look like to serve the city for the next 30 years, similar to the police station and be a full-service facility. Vet clinic and the animal bonding community rooms are basically generous features added into shelters more commonly seen in urban areas. In, even in this concept here, the vet and the community rooms and things would be part of a second phase of, of a facility for, for Los Manos. Our current shelter is approximately one-third the size of the one shown here, and we did get confirmation from Dr. Wagner. She indicated that our shelter is, is fully functional for a community our size with, with a couple of strategic alterations that we could add, cost-effectively, maybe over the next few years. And she identified those, those alterations that could happen, and Indigo estimated the, how that would work. Dr. Wagner said, and I think this is a, a key point, that our statistics suggest that our staff and volunteers are performing exceptionally in our current shelter, given the number of animals processed, and combine that with the placement ratio. So, given our current situation, we were given some pretty high marks from a professor at a, at a nationally recognized university. So I, I felt good about that, I think the chief and his staff did too. Last month, we invited the community of Los Manos to a public meeting. Our goal was to garner input and have the community weigh in on the plans to build new police facilities. The meeting was held at the Community Center Lounge. We had a blend of staff and community members who contributed to the conversation about public safety and, and the animal shelter. We're planning to have another work-study session here with Indigo, possibly the end of this month, 1st of next. Also, around that time, shortly after that work-study session, we want to have another community meeting and be able to give the community an update, hopefully gleaning some additional input and questions and comments. We tentatively set some dates, but we're looking at adjusting that if necessary. And once we believe there are some solid options for the future of public safety, we'd like to have a, a combined meeting of the planning, the Planning Commission and, and you folks. So, our goal for the needs assessment, we hope, and what we've been talking about for months now, is a product which defines the needs of public safety, outlines the potential of new facilities, produces a foundation for the architectural design of new facilities once, and once the new facilities are operational, kind of outline a strategy for how to use our current facilities and existing land to repurpose them or, or something along those lines. So, there's more that can be said about this. This is, I think, one of the most exciting projects that we've had here in years, and yet I don't want to break any records for length in presentation tonight, so I will try however to answer any questions that you may have about the project and other members of the staff are here and the project team as well, including Chief Breezy. So, anything?
Okay, Councilman, any questions? We'll wait for part two.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you. Did Chief run out anything?
No.
Okay. All right, I understood. Okay. All right, let's go on to.
Item number 12, advising of public notices, and there's no report tonight. So now we're going on to item 13, City Manager Report, Report pursuant to Government Code Section 54953, Subsection C3, Executive Compensation, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. On January 29th, 2019, based upon my performance review, the Fire Chief's salary was increased to $11,025 monthly, $132,300 annually, retroactive to October 16th, 2018. The other thing I'll add this evening is that this Friday, Police Department will be hosting Coffee with a Cop. So that's this Friday, 8:00 to 10:00 AM at Starbucks, 1380 Pacheco Boulevard. I was asked this afternoon which one that is, since we do have a couple here in town. This is, not a plug for Walgreens, but this is the one next to Walgreens. So, see you all there Friday for Coffee with a Cop. I think the chief will be there, as well as the commanders and other patrol staff. So, see you all there. That's it.
So just to let you know, the mayor asked that question because he wanted to know which way to go, east or west. So go east, right? Yeah, okay, all right. Follow the sun, you got it in the morning. All right, okay. Okay. Item number 14, City Councilmember reports. Tonight, we'll start with Mr. Freya.
Thank you, Mayor. A reminder, Lost Banjos is Sunday at the Arts Center, 3:00 PM. Tickets are $25 in advance and $30 at the door. I think there are student tickets available. And then, there is also, I got, check this here, the Nights at Columbus, of which I am one. We got a letter telling us that this Saturday, February 9th, the Community Center at 9:00 AM is the free throw contest, and so Nights at Columbus do free throw contests every year. So according to my letter, Saturday, February 9th, 9:00 AM at the Community Center. Larry Barelli would be the guy to get in touch with on that. And then, in March, in advance, we've got the Parent Institute on March 2nd, I'm sure Matt will be hearing more about that, for that. One more thing, schools last week had the first, our first annual all-district choir festival, 250 children singing, and it was quite successful. A lot of work, it was a lot of fun. And we're doing more and more with our schools and our activities and more to let our recruitment people know, this is a great place to raise your family. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go on to Mrs. Santos.
Thank you very much. Not much to report tonight, but I want to thank the city and also for allowing us to go to the Tri-County Dinner, which was hosted in Gustine, and thank them as well for the wonderful event. And that is all I have tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jones?
No report tonight.
Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I had the opportunity on January the 24th to attend the Valley Crisis Center presentation on human trafficking for Merced County. And in short, what they are trying to do is raise awareness of human trafficking in Merced County and laying a foundation for collaboration of relationships between agencies working with victims and their service area and in building Human Trafficking Task Force. And our new district attorney, Kimberly Helms-Lewis, was one of the presenters, and our own sergeant, Justin Melden, among other people who were on the task force from, on the speaking panel, I'm sorry, from Memorial Hospital and other agencies within the county. It was a great presentation and an eye-opener for me to understand some differences in terminology and what goes on. So it, it's an unfortunate thing that happens in our world today and especially with young people. So I was really grateful that we were able to host that event here in Los Manos. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, tonight we have, and it wasn't a very exciting meeting, but we have Mason Ferrera with us tonight and his mother, Mrs. Ferrera, and, and they are here because Mason is up and it's 9:01, and he is earning his merit badge for, for the Boy Scouts. And so he is here tonight observing our city council. So Mason, and I will extend publicly what, what I said to you privately, if you have any questions, please contact any one of us and, and we will try and help you with anything that you need in order to earn that merit badge. And thank you for being part of our council meeting tonight. Mom, thank you for driving him. So, they had mentioned about the, the presentation on economic development. They'd mentioned that this group visited us from South America, and they chose Los Manos. They had a number of cities they could have visited, but they visited Los Manos. And Los Manos rolled out several red carpets for what they did and showed them what Los Manos is like and what we have to offer. And I can tell you, it was such an enjoyable morning. Thank you to staff for what you did and, and, you know, I've had contacts from, from the individuals, they want to be Sister Cities now, and, and other high-level people that came from Washington DC. The person that came, Dr. Haga, who came, he, I met him in Washington DC at one of the trips, and he traveled to Los Manos with this group in, in order to, to, to highlight and showcase what the Valley has to offer and what Los Manos has to offer. So, and we did really well, as you can see from the presentations from, from the two presenters tonight, one staff and then our, our consultant. So, I will tell you that we need to move forward with this plan, I believe in it, and, and we need to do whatever we can in forming partnerships with the people that have the land and to get the buildings here because I, I can't stress enough how hard it is on the people living in Los Manos commuting four hours a day and these super commuters, and we have a, a, another generation of kids that are not being parented by their parents full-time because they're trying to earn a living and live here in Los Manos. And educators, Mr. Freya, you see it all the time. And, and so, so I, I would tell you, whatever we can do to assist that and whatever pressure that we can put on the, the individuals to, to, companies or, or the legislature, we need to do it. And I gotta be quiet because I don't want to go into a non-agendized item. So, anyway, thank you for the presentation. So with that, we're going to go into closed session, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, Agency Designated Representative, City Manager Tarazas, City Attorney Vaughn, City- Manager, Tarazas, City Attorney Vaughn, City Clerk, Human Resources Director Maloney, Finance Director Williams, Legal Counsel Tufo, Employee Organizations, Los Banos Police Office Association, LBPOA, Los Banos Police Dispatches, Community Services, Officers Association, LBD, CSOA, and Unrepresented Miscellaneous Employees. And if we have anything to report, we will do so when we return. Thank you.